I'm Janice Dix, I'm the Troop Co-Leader. We meet at Sharpsburg Baptist Church.
And she's my mom.
And you're mine. And we, this is, they, these, these girls are all, what grade did I go in?
First.
First grade. What are you, Girl Scout?
Leader.
Daisies. Daisies. And they're, this is their second year as Girl Scout.
Yes, and we all, of everybody.
And I want you to tell everybody your name and what your favorite part of Girl Scouts is.
My name is Claire, and my favorite part of Girl Scouts is when we get to learn about all the new fun stuff.
My name's Zoe, and I like, I see when everybody laugh and everyone.
My name's Lauren, I like going to the aquarium.
My name is Lauren, and I like that we go on, on field trips as Girl Scouts. And, uh, I love that my mom takes care of all of us.
And she loves me.
Yes, indeed. Alright. So, the reason we're here today is because we're working on a badge, it's called our Good Neighbor Badge.
Yeah.
And we need to know about our community, so we thought that if we stopped by and we were able to do the pledge for the council, we could, uh, that would be part of our badge.
Wait, which pledge? The Pledge of Allegiance or Our Pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Ah, yeah.
Okay. Do you want to do the Girl Scout?
Yeah.
Ready, do just, just do the... You guys are gonna do the Girl Scout. Okay? Ready?
On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law.
Very good, very good. That's it.
I'll try.
Alright, let's do our pledge. Everybody turn around.
Everybody would stand please.
Stand, stand.
Alright, girls, turn around, place the flag, and, ready?
A duty is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice!
We brought you guys with you.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. They're everybody's.
Everybody's have to share. We learn about sharing.
Y'all all have to share.
What do you guys share?
If they know that's my thing.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for turning.
Thank you. Thank you ladies. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have a forum present?
Yes, we do.
Okay, excellent. So, the first thing we have on the agenda is the rezoning application that has been filed by JHJ Sharpsburg 65 LLC and RBC Sharpsburg 35 LLC. Um, the, this public hearing has been called for the consideration of a zoning decision, and we need to inquire about conflicts of interest and campaign contributions. Um, I would like to poll the members of Town Council as to conflicts of interest with this proposed zoning decision. Uh, so I will start, uh, down at the far end. Uh, Mr. Teagle, do you have any conflicts of interest, or have you received any campaign contributions from the applicants?
Nope.
Ms. Good?
Nope.
Mr. Parton?
No.
Ms. Puckett?
No, sir.
And I ha- I have not received, um, campaign contributions or had any conflicts, conflict of interest for, uh, this applicant. And this is, uh, contributions within the last two years preceding the filing of this application. In the members of the audience, do we have anyone who would like to speak for or against the zoning application? And I'll ask for the show of hands for, first, from the audience.
Can we ask a question for, where is it?
Sure. Oh, okay. So, the, the parcel is, um... Leanne, you wanna explain it? Let me just go, let me go right there.
It's on Mackintosh Trail, it's probably next to the state's, next to the state's.
This is the property right here, three point seven five acres.
Thank you.
Kind of point out this ground up here, this is probably would be the easiest. The acres that they're looking to rezone.
They're picking that out.
This one, right there. The part they're looking to rezone. It is south of them. That part right there. South of them. Um, so we wanna make sure that everybody has time to speak for or against the re, uh, re, the zoning application. Uh, do I have anybody that wants to speak in favor or for it?
What is, what are they rezoning to and for?
Um, what they're doing is they are rezoning from the, uh, R1 designation to a planned community development. This is, uh, just a teeny tiny corner of the larger 12 parks parcel. On the town property, they're just gonna have 11 lots right there.
So this is just the, what's gonna be in Sharpsburg?
Mm-hmm, yes ma'am. Mm-hmm, yes ma'am, yes ma'am. And because we, we needed, we, to make it easier on them and to make it easier on the permitting process, we wanted to align it as closely with the county's, uh, zoning as we could. And that is found in the Planned Community District, uh, zoning designation. Do I have anybody that wants to speak? Uh, yes, sir?
We've got some property right across the road from it.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just kinda concerned about, uh, what it's gonna be. I probably should've read a little more, have a sense of it. I don't really understand all that it's gonna be. I'm all for it being a park.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It's gonna be great, and, uh, it's something that we'll review by property, I'm sure. But I'm just curious as to exactly what this is gonna be. You put, uh, you say it's divided into several different parts?
Right, yes sir. There, they, uh, I'll let Ms. Leanne speak on it, 'cause she, she knows.
Probably is gonna show you on these plans. I'm sure, but... So, phase four, this is phase four of the 12 park subdivision. These 11 lots are part of that. We have self-composed age-restricted classification for this, this part of the community. And so it's a 55 and older neighborhood. Uh, projected sales price of the homes, 375 to 425. And there's two entrances.
The last entrance that we're on, we put all the lights on.
So, this is, that's not happening anymore, or that, but these are, we have two entrances. One's gonna run, uh, line up right across from Del Run.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, let me show you better, and then the other, we changed a little bit. The other one is lines up right across from the substation, right here. So, we have on one side, so this lineup at Del Run, this is at the substation. We have like a 12 acre track and a 5 acre track each side of that substation. So there'll be two entrances, and this little line right here is the section that's in the town of, uh, Sharpsburg that we're asking for rezoning. So they're putting the same stipulations as the county put on with the architectural controls and things were in there, but those are the lots that we're talking about. And there'll be a, there'll be a turn lane out here, and we're actually having to do, the county's requiring us to do a full death reclamation, uh, so we're redoing this whole portion of the road, and yes.
That's where they dig all the way down from the substrate.
I can use my car to.
Basically, make a whole new road.
Make it right there.
Yes, yeah, 'cause they're gonna need to for the incoming traffic. Alright, do we have any other questions?
What's your estimate on, uh, starting, you know, completion?
Uh, we have, um, a land disturbance permit from the county for the first phase, so it's 124 lots in this phase, um, that we're breaking into two different phases. So the portion that, uh, is in Sharpsburg won't start development for those 49 lots for probably about a year and a half. But we are starting as soon as the rain will stop, on the other 75 of this phase. Which is the corner of North Road and Mackintosh.
But there's only gonna be 11 lots that are within Sharpsburg. The, the larger numbers are out in the unincorporated county.
I see.
Only 11 lots are gonna be in that, that portion right there, that, that we are rezoning.
Uh, we built a sewer treatment plant. We had to build a sewer treatment plant for the county. And, uh, so we, we have to run an alcohol line from that property to there. Uh, Mr. Cole, uh, strongly suggested, and we agreed to, be able to run a, uh, sewer line in the second phase, that will start about a year and a half. We're stubbing out at the corner, at the right of way, for future access.
And that is probably gonna be... Leanne, it's...
It's at that corner of that property. Yeah, it's right, we're going right to the corner, right there.
That corner right there, okay. So, so this is where their stubout will be, and pending, uh, they have a meeting to hold, and then we are gonna be holding a in, informal discussion session about, with the business owners in this area to talk with them about the process of stubbing up and, and getting access to sewer, because eventually, you know, this whole section right here i- is gonna be developed, and I'd like to bring in all the business owners from here in this area to talk about and see what the needs are and future plans are. So, by, by being good partners, we benefit from partnership. Is that the area that you're calling the substation? It's in that general area?
Substation's across the street, yes.
Okay.
The Georgia Transmission. Yeah, it'll be a little, the, the manhole will be a little closer to, a couple hundred feet closer of Mackintosh than where that substation is. Just on that side of that.
Alright, thanks.
And then you're talking about phase two being roughly a year and a half away?
Yes.
I would best be interested in that, having Sharpsburg tired, we're looking at when service might be available.
So, yeah, it'll take us about six, seven months to develop. Yeah, well, if this weather pattern doesn't continue, you know that phase, so a couple years, um, might.
Do I have any questions from council for or against the rezoning?
I don't.
Alright. Um, Carson, Mr. Sears, is there anything that I am leaving out or that I need to make sure that, that we include?
See if anybody in opposition says speak.
Do we have anybody that's opposed to the rezoning?
No further questions, you can close the hearing.
Alright. If there are no further questions from public or from council, uh, we will close the public hearing.
Close the hearing, yeah.
Okay, if I can get a motion to close the public hearing?
You don't have to, you just close it.
No, no motion to close, okay. Alright, any other final, before I close the public hearing? Public council, alright, wonderful. We will go ahead and close the public hearing, uh, go into our, uh, regular council meeting. Um, first thing is gonna be the review and approval of minutes, um, from the corrected minutes of January 6th.
Yes, I believe that Julie had Stan Parton in a different post than what he said to him. So in those, um, minutes, they correct those post numbers?
It was one though, wasn't it?
Yes.
I told you you were number one.
Yeah.
But you used the wrong player.
Never. Okay, and then also the minutes from February 3rd of 2020? I started to go back.
Way in the back.
On the corrected minutes from the 6th, I can motion to accept as written. Alright, so Stan has a motion to accept the corrected minutes for January 6th.
I'll second.
Elizabeth has a second. All in favor?
I'm sorry, I just found my pages, girl.
Sorry, no, 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 go ahead. No, 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 take your time. No, you're fine. Alright, unanimous, thank you. Alright, so this is the first time we're seeing the minutes for Fe- February 3rd and 10th, correct?
Yes.
February 3rd, motion to accept as written.
Stan has made the initial motion. Second. Tom has the second. Everybody in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We can look at the work session minutes from February the 10th.
Make a motion to accept. I second it.
Everybody in favor?
I can vote for it there.
Alright. Uh, unanimous for those, unanimous for those that were present, thank you. Alright, so, having done the review and approval of minutes, uh, we are going to, we have a couple of speakers, uh, here tonight, so the first one that, that I will recognize is the Honorable Judge John Simpson, who is one of the Superior Court Judges for the Coweta Judicial Circuit. Judge Simpson?
My name is John Simpson, I'm the Chief Superior Court Judge for the Coweta Circuit. The Coweta Judicial Circuit is Carroll, Coweta, Hur, Troop, and Merriweather Counties. And, um, I've been in this position for 24 years as Superior Court Judge. I've been the chief judge for the past four years, and I've been in elected office for a total of 34 years. And I'm here to tell you something about your mayor. Uh, he, he and I invented a court program.
Yeah.
And it was a child support program. And it was later named the Rental Accountability Court. And this program has now gone all over the state of Georgia. And it's, um, it's also received a national award as the most innovative program in the nation. And, so we had a lunch recently and, um, went over that, and he was telling me all about Sharpsburg, and I said, "Well, I wanna come, because I love citizen democracy in small towns, and I look forward to getting to know you folks better, and I'm gonna, he's gonna keep me informed, and I'm gonna try to come to some of the, uh, town festivals and things like that." So, thank y'all very much for having me.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. We also have a couple of representatives from our Chamber of Commerce, Cynthia Bennett and Joy Barnes.
Thank you for having us. Who knows what April 1st is?
The day that I get in trouble.
Yeah.
Than usual, more than usual.
About, yeah. Stay on Facebook, right? Um, so it's when the census starts for Coweta County. So 10 years ago, we had an 82% participation rate, which was the highest in the state of Georgia, which was great, but there was 18% that did not participate, and we need that other 18%. So Cynthia's gonna talk about that, how it works, and what we need to do.
What we're gonna do.
Yeah.
So, good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members for letting us be here this evening. You will be hearing from us a lot, um, between now and April 1st and, um, beyond, because we are launching a program that we are calling Coweta Counts. This is just some general census information that I would like for you to have this evening, but we are going to engage all of the municipalities to, um, encourage all of our citizens of Coweta to be accounted this year. And as a matter of fact, um, Mayor Cole is co-hosting with the chamber, uh, gathering of the mayors on March 17th. And we're going to get ideas, we're going to brainstorm, and ask the mayors what they need from the chamber to make sure that all of the municipalities are fully counted. We also have plans for the incorporated areas of the community, but I just wanna thank you for letting us introduce this to you, get Census 2020 in your brains, and start thinking about all of our community. Now, we know the areas of our county that did not engage last time. We know where the lo- loan numbers were, so we've got a campaign where we're going to reach out through nonprofits and through the civic groups into those areas. Not knocking on doors, not taking the census, but so that when August rolls around and the knocking on doors part starts, Coweta's fully counted. Thank you, Cynthia.
Of course, how can you do it online now?
Yes, and that's one of the most exciting parts of it, is that you can, three, three different ways. You can complete your census online, you can complete your census with a census taker, and you can do it by mail. So there are three ways to make that happen this year. And the big question everybody asks is, is there a phone app? And there is not. They do not, you can't come up with a phone app so people can do it over phone.
They still have to.
They still do. One of the strongest issues that we have in this county is that we have areas of the county that do not have internet access, so we're talking, we're, you know, really brainstorming. Maybe the CEC has a day where folks can go by and complete it online. The Chamber has a day. This community center has a day. So, we want to make it very convenient for all of our community. If you just multiply 18% of our population by $2,000 a year, that's quite a bit of money that, that would be left on the federal table that needs to go our way.
How did, uh, Sharpsburg tally as far as, versus the 82%?
So, here's the thing. On the way over here, I realized I probably should've looked that up and did not, but I will get it back to Mayor Cole, and he'll get it to you.
Is it true that they're gonna stop asking people after the third call? Whereas before, they went dozen times, 18 times?
Yes, they are. They are.
So, it's internet, and they're gonna stop after three?
Well, it's internet, but then in August, they're going to start the one-on-one. That's when they're going to start the calling and going door-to-door.
It's interesting to see how they pull that off.
I know, I know.
So I've already received calls that they're going door-to-door. Are those real census people or fake?
No, there are scams, and there are a lot of myths that are out there, but there are scams, and that's one of the things that we're going to talk about, um, starting in March, when this campaign launches, which it will launch, this is actually the first event where we've talked about it. And we will be talking about, do not respond to any telephone calls, nobody should charge you money, nobody should be threatening you, nobody should be saying that you go to jail, because of course, none of that is true. But yes, those calls are already starting.
So, the door-to-doors fake people too?
Yes. They, they shouldn't even start till August. Everybody should get a postcard in March that says, "This is your census number, and you may go online, or you may respond this way," but all of that starts April 1st. So the postcards come out March 1st, and then the census begins April 1st.
And we talked about having a couple of computers available up at the library for our citizens that don't have access.
That is exactly the kind of thing we're looking for.
Yeah.
That's excellent.
So we should be getting those postcards pretty soon?
They should be coming in the mail. Everybody will pitch them out with their...
So that's like, that'll be like a PIN number, right?
We all know what we do with those postcards, but we kind of want everybody to keep their eyes out for it. So I don't know if you have a newsletter that's going out later in March, but if you could just keep, get your citizens to keep an eye out for those postcards.
So that code number will be like your PIN number when you go online?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And if you have any kind of social media badges or information to promote, we can certainly put it on the town's webpage, on the Facebook page, and push it out on Instagram as well.
The, uh, the campaign went live today on the, um, account, on the chamber website, and you'll be able to see. It's the myths, it's the scams, it's all of that. It's on the website.
Each year, they do population projections for, for each of the towns, and I noticed in Sharpsburg's, ours was the only town that went down in Coweta County in, I think, start 2019, it was mid-2019. And I'll question that, because I knew we hadn't lost anybody in town, and we actually had two or three babies born, so I don't know how we went down one number when we didn't have any subtracts, but it had at least three additions.
Well, it's such a growing area, yeah.
So, yeah, maybe, I kinda scratched my head at that, but I, I can't wait to see if we can get past the 354 number that we, we've been at.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, and good evening.
Thank you.
Alright, do I have any other public comments before we move into the meat of the agenda? Alright, um, the next item on the agenda is the first reading to adopt the ordinance to rezone the property. You will find our rezoning in your packet. If you would review it, and then we will take questions and lean on Mr. Sears' shoulders for that.
This is just the first reading, correct?
Yes.
Carson, do we just need one, or will there be a second reading?
Be a second reading.
Okay.
Pretty cut and dressed, huh? I'm like, the motion to accept is written.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to accept as written.
I'll second it.
All right, Cynthia has a second. All in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. All right, the second item before us, I'm sorry, Carson, is there anything else that we need to do on this matter?
Usually you read the first paragraph, but this is about.
Do you want me to read the first paragraph?
If you want to, yeah, just for a first reading.
Okay, sure. "The town of Sharpsburg has received an application for rezoning by JHJ Sharpsburg 65 LLC and RBC Sharpsburg 35 LLC for property described in Exhibit A property from the town's R1 Rural Residential District zoning classification to PCD Planned Community District zoning classification subject to their conditions and their requirements set out in the Coweta County RIB District and other Coweta County Commission approvals and conditions attached heretofore as Exhibit B. Said parcel of property is currently zoned R1 Rural Residential District. The town has given notice to the public of this proposed zoning and public hearings have been conducted as required by law. The town complied with the requirements of OCGA 3636-4 and 3636-5 prior to the adoption of this ordinance." Okay, the next item is an opportunity. Department of Transportation has issued calls for the Roadside Enhancement and Beautification Council grant, the REBC grant. And basically, what DOT will do is for eligible projects and eligible expenses, they will reimburse up to, oh Lord, I don't have it right here. They will reimburse a certain amount for any roadside enhancement and beautification. So basically, entranceways into the city, any native plants, any kind of roadside improvements that the town wants to do. We can, we can submit a project, and if they approve it, we can start work on the project and then they will reimburse us up to a certain amount. What I would like to do is talk with the school system, continue that strong partnership that we have, and find some of their landscaping or horticulture students and help them, or have them help us do a design project for whatever area we decide. And it can be an entranceway into the city, it can be any roadside planting or beautification. One of the areas that was suggested is 54, just north of the North City Limits, north of Dollar General, and do a city entrance planting right there. But we as council can decide on what area we want to. Then I'll get with the school system on helping design it, and then we can put the package together. It is not due until the end of April. So we've got, we've got enough time to get the details of the project, work them out, write the proposal, and then submit it.
So it's just one project though, right?
Yes, it is. Yeah, the grant rules say you can do one, 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 one specific project or area. We could probably do something on Main Street or in Main Street, but I think it might be a good idea to do one of the entrances to town that doesn't have really anything. There's nothing on 54 North. The other entrances have signs. 54 and Tarrentine has a sign, East Coweta has a sign, 16 doesn't, but 54 doesn't either.
Either that or one has the most traffic flow, the one where we go after.
Yeah, we can do that.
One thing recommends the 54 north of the Dollar General, is we've got a lot of people coming down through there and it, they just, if it slows one person down, they say, "Oh, I'm going into a town." It slows one person down, it's worth the effort.
Yeah.
I like 154 at the high school, but that's gonna be an engineering project, because that's a, that's a pretty deep hole in there.
Yeah, it is, and there's gonna be, eventually, there's gonna be some DOT work right there. So I would, I, we could do it there, but I would hesitate to do it there. Because something's gonna happen at that intersection in the next probably two and a half years.
You can make something look pretty good up north of town.
Yeah, I, I think so too, and I really think we have a lot of strengths. We have a really good relationship with DOT. Involving the local school system is gonna make for a strong application. Some of the native plants and plantings that we would use would make for a strong application. And honestly, we can do it, air quotes, fairly cheaply. And anytime they can get a small impactful grant, that is much more likely to succeed than a large extravagant project. So there's really, other than, other, there's really no action to be taken on this by vote tonight. I just wanted to bring it up and say, "This is, this is, this is out there." And then if you guys agree, we will look into it and start running down some more of the details.
Yeah, let's roll that in.
Okay, excellent, thank you all. Any questions from the public regarding roadside beautification? Any thoughts? All right, the next item is, okay, so in case y'all hadn't heard. In case anybody hadn't heard, Arbor Valley got broken into the other week. Somebody, last Monday, somebody hopped in their box truck, and since the gate was locked, they decided to make their own gate. And pushed right through the fence back here. So we need to repair the fence. We have three quotes in front of us. We do know that eventually we are planning on redoing the back parking lot back there. So I don't want to invest a whole lot of money into a fence. And these quotes kind of reflect that, because I would imagine we're gonna change it and improve it anyway when we improve the back parking lot. So as you're looking at the quotes, please keep that in mind. Deana, since you have been coordinating that, do you want to talk about the quotes or add any information that I may have left off?
Sure, if you can look at the first quote from Clement Spence Company, we can see, we're just gonna include from the pole that was not damaged by the gate to the end of the property by the caissons. And it's about 88 foot, so we're just asking for them to repair so that when Arbor Valley can keep the rest of their equipment and vehicles in a gated, locked fence.
And we did get very lucky. When I first heard about it, I thought they knocked down the gate, which gates, those gates were incredibly expensive to replace. But we got very lucky, they did not hit the gate, they hit the regular fence. So the gate is okay. The gate pole was bent slightly, but nothing, they can't bang back into place and repair the fence.
So does Arbor Valley have renters insurance?
Yes, they do. They've actually got their insurance working on it right now. Since we own the property, I'm turning it into karma, but there is a quote right at $1,000, which also our deductible is $1,000. So I would say just to pay it and hold on.
Yeah, and I'm tempted to pay it out of pocket so we don't raise our rates. I mean, they're gonna go up anyway, just because that's what happened in CCA.
You think they'd split it with us? You gonna get some from Arbor Valley's insurance company?
You know, their equipment, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
If we pay this and they get reimbursed on insurance, we would get the money, right?
Well, we're gonna ask for restitution, so the guy, we, our, our security cameras picked up all of it except him jumping in the truck, so we couldn't identify the person that stole it. But we think it was a disgruntled employee, because they had just fired two guys the week prior. And they knew exactly what to do and what truck to get for all their equipment. I think there's about $35,000 worth of equipment in the back of that truck. And the truck was a brand-new box truck, so.
Did they recover the stuff?
No, not, they haven't found anything. Not the truck. There's assuming that, I think the Sheriff's Department told them they'd probably be able to find their equipment at local pawn shops versus the vehicle was probably somewhere in a locked garage somewhere.
Let's go back to Stan's question. I mean, if these guys have got insurance coverage, and we fix it, we can't get their insurance money?
Well, their insurance is not gonna fix our fence. They're gonna replace their property.
Oh, okay.
And we are the property owners.
Okay, okay.
So we have to file it on our insurance, but we're asking for restitution from the people that have stolen it for damages. So we will get reimbursed once they.
If they ever find.
If they ever find, sure. But I can ask a question about their insurance company too.
So which three quotes do we have, Deana?
We have three quotes. Clement Spence quoted $1,017. JP Fencing quoted $1,766.57. And then Fencing Unlimited has quoted $1,807.51. And I've called them to make sure that they were all on the same page, so they were quoted on the same kind of material. So they all were quoting 6-foot, 1 and 1/2 gauge galvanized chain length. Chain length, yes.
I'm spending a whole lot of money on it myself.
Yeah, because we're probably gonna do something a lot nicer once we do the, redo the back lot.
So is the reason that that's fenced and gated is for that tenant? Otherwise, would it not be?
Well, I think that there was just one fence, but I think Arbor Valley put their other fence on the front or in the middle.
I think that fence back there's been there for a while.
I don't, I don't remember, I don't remember it not being there, so.
All I can remember, I think it's gonna be there.
Yeah, but I mean, to fence in the whole yard, or was it just the backside fence?
All I remember is the backside.
Yeah, because Arbor Valley has got the front side locked in too, where there's a gate. So I thought they added that themselves, I'm not sure.
I'm making most of it go with the least expensive one.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for.
Pay it out of pocket and not file on insurance.
Clement Spence Company, pay it out of pocket and not file on insurance.
I'll second.
So we have a first and a second? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you all. The last bit of business is to, or the last bit of new business is to look at a resolution that recognizes Georgia Cities Week from April 19th through the 25th. This is something that we do through, through GMA each year, and if you will look at it.
Can you contact Brandy, or not Brandy, Mandy with Waste Management? And ask if they could bring the dumpsters back out this year?
Yes.
Last year, we had been bringing a bunch of dumpsters so that we could have a naked cleanup. And when you have stuff, just come in and dump it, no questions asked. So we just can't have tires and refrigerators. Everything else we can take.
Is it too early, is it too early to talk about that?
No, it's not too early.
Last time we did it, we did it where we locked them up behind a gate at 4 o'clock, and nobody coming home from work could use them.
Right.
And I think we oughta stick them back there in the back lot.
And just open them.
Open them up, let somebody sit out there and just watch.
You willing to hear?
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll do it.
And too, and too, with enough lead time to work on it, we can, we, I'm sure we can find some Boy Scouts or something that, that could spend a couple, maybe a couple hours a night.
It'd just be nice to have it available to people to use.
Yeah, because last year, we didn't have like three days to talk about it, and they were here and, you know, but this time, we could put it on our Facebook page and our website and, you know, some more areas in the bathroom, advertising in the bathroom and restroom doors, bathroom doors, stuff like that, so that people read them.
And that, I think, is a good thing to do during the Georgia Cities Week, because, you know, it's about, it's about community. It's about towns and providing services to the citizens.
I also see someone on Stovall/Main Street over here. They had a bunch of stuff, and I've already called for their pickup. And I think this probably has some yard debris, so I'll call for those to pick up. So, and they used to pick it up by the way.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so if I can get a motion to recognize April 20, 19th through the 25th as Georgia Cities Week?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you all. All right, so all new business being concluded, and there being no old business pending before council. I will go to a polling of the council. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but just one minute. Point of information, Mr. Sears, I misspoke. May through July, the census takers will be, will not respond in other ways. All of it will be done by August. May through July, and nobody should be calling you, you should be initiating phone calls.
Ah, okay, excellent.
How much trouble would it be to figure out what our number was?
Not at all, I just need to make the right phone call. And I should have done it before I came up here.
Would you let me know?
I'll have, I will have it to you tomorrow, I'll find out.
I'll give you my card for it there.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I've already sent you the website that goes to share with the council.
Ah, wonderful. Okay, thank you. I'll start down on the far end for polling the council, Mr. Teagle.
I'm looking for a two-sentence response, but can you tell us where we are on the sewage negotiations? Any changes, any?
No, no changes. I'm hoping to sit down with 12 parks and the businesses in 54 McIntosh area to just kind of get a rough timetable, mainly to help them prepare and also to kind of help us prepare for what's there. Regarding the line, Jay will be having a board meeting later this week. And then I want to begin talking to county commissioners about lifting the restrictions and, and starting that conversation with them. I don't know what the, what format it will take, whether it be a resolution or whether it be a staff directive or what, but I just, I want to have the conversations with the county commissioners that say, "Our units, we're gonna need sewer to grow and to provide the services and to, and to thrive." And I just want to start having that conversation, and at least we're having it. And if they say no, then we can look at other options or other opportunities. All right.
That's all I had.
Elizabeth?
Nothing.
Steven?
Nothing.
Cynthia? Okay. Next section is gonna be the clerks' comments.
And I don't have anything. We, no, I'm, I'm sorry, we have collected probably 85% of our business license. They were due February the 18th. So we've got just a few more straggling in, so we've done very good at that, so.
Good job.
Okay, excellent. All right, so for the mayor's minutes, a couple of things that are gonna be coming up. The speed tables are on the way. They were shipped out late last week, and we're anticipating they would arrive Wednesday over here to Arbor Valley. I am still waiting on a final clarification on a quote that will include placing the road signs and doing the required striping for the speed tables. Once I get that back, I will reach out to council with the final number. It will be within 5 or 10% of your earlier allowance, which was up to about $10,000 for the installation of them. Once I get that number and get approval, then we will schedule the installation. Once I get that number and get approval, then we will schedule the installation. What that's going to depend on, based on the contractor's schedule, is just up in the air. But relief hopefully from the speeding is on the way. I know that has been an issue that has, has been before council for a number of, of months, if not years. And we are, they're, they're on their way to us, they're being shipped from Canada. Which surprised me, I didn't realize that they were being, I thought they were, you know, Midwest, but they're coming from Canada.
Isn't that coming from Canada?
Right, yeah, we're never going to, that happened. We have, as far as an update on the back lot, we have asked the Christopher Brothers for the final contours on the survey, which we will then turn over to Brennan Jones to draw up a plan. What I want to do is I want to get the contour and then ask Brennan, how much is it going to cost to design the back lot? And I'll bring that to council and say, he's going to charge X amount of money to design the back lot.
Ask him first.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, right, yes, oh yeah, absolutely, yes. Yeah, that's why we want to get it ahead of time. Following that, then we'll coordinate with the county about doing the actual work and grading, get it on their schedule and get their quote, then we'll bring that back before council. And hopefully we can get, we will start progressing on getting the back lot done. What I would like to do is i- if y'all have, or even, even the public as well, if y'all have a specific idea for something back there, I know we've mentioned recreation areas. The container has got the primer coat on it, so hopefully we can get the muralist out here when the weather clears up and warms up to get the mural painted on there. So the back lot is, we're hopefully going to continue to progress on the back lot cleanup, or cleanup and improvement and, and all that. For Georgia Cities Week, we've already mentioned the dumpster, but I'd like to do another community cleanup like we did last year. One seventy-one Tarantine, I believe her name is Miss Patsy, has a lot of overgrowth around her house. I'd like to see if we couldn't get some of the communities and congregations that we got last time to come out and we'll just spend a day out there. The, the guy from Waste Management, our daughters play soccer together and he and I were talking about it this weekend. So hopefully we're, we'll pick a date, probably that Saturday, which is maybe the twenty-sixth, and, and do the cleanup then. That will also give us time to coordinate with the dumpster so that we can get that out here and, and have the dumpster available. And then I like Tom's suggestion about having it out to where we can keep it open and, and people after work can, can take advantage of it. So hopefully we will have a cleanup coming up. Yes, sir.
The cleanup back here on the back lot, what to do? The old steam engine that's back there in the building, is there anything in the works to preserve? Just kind of memorialize that, since that is a big piece of history in Sharksburg.
Yeah, there is, and, and I would love to, we haven't broached that subject for the property owner because that is on privately owned property. I, I would, I would love to eventually preserve it and, and showcase it and display it because, and what Alan's talking about is the, the motor and the flywheel from the old gen that used to be right back there behind the caissons, well, on the far side of the caissons property. That still remains out there and of course, it's covered up in weeds and vines and all that. But it, it would be a very neat relic to, to, to pull out and preserve and do something with somehow.
That could incorporate, if you don't do any kind of walk or anything, you could kind of incorporate that.
Yeah, I don't know that we would have access to that area, but, you know, it's, I certainly wouldn't mind bringing it up. Another thing is don't forget that on April fourth and fifth, we're having the Jungle Book, we'll be here. You will start seeing a, a, hopefully a good amount of advertising and press on it. And just as you see it, please share it, please talk to folks if, if we can. If you need to buy any tickets for large groups or corporate sales, let me know and I'll, can certainly work something out with Serenby. But we're very excited to have that. There has been some conversation and interest with the Noonan Community Theater Company. They have an improv troupe that also goes out and does performances outside of a standard theater. And, and, and I would love to bring them maybe in the fall out here and, and do a, a skit or a comedy hour or two out here at the park. And those kind of small things that bring folks to town, you know, it just raises our profile and gets us, gets us noticed. That's all that I have on the mayor's minutes. Do I have any questions from council over any of the items that I just went over, went through? All right, any questions from the public? On any of the items or any of the previous items that we discussed tonight?
I've got one, I've got two.
Yes, ma'am?
You mentioned restrict when you were talking about sewer, what do you mean by restrict?
So the, the county currently restricts sewer services only to fifty-five and up and commercial facilities. They don't do single-family residential sewer by miles throughout the county. There are one or two developments that were grandfathered in, but that has been the policy for the last twenty years probably.
One more.
Sure.
Mentioned fifty-five and over for that rezoned property. Did the work session of the previous meeting, did y'all, I think a couple of y'all mentioned that fifty-five and over developments are not the thing anymore, did I misunderstand that?
No, I mean, I think there's definitely a need for them, but just them on every corner is a little much.
They were talking about the Thompson property of around sixteen, not that particular area.
Correct, yeah. And, 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 right, no, 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 absolutely, and, and part of the concern from the developers is that that's just such a narrow market and there is so much, I mean, twelve parks has, how many fifty-five plus units?
One twenty-four out of six seventy-six. So we have something to offer for the regular single family and this phase was just kind of maybe to support where people bought in there, wanted their parents to live close to help with kids and stuff. So I can see this point. And if you already have one right here, we don't need another, you know, I, I see where his point of, of that is. And there's another one in the county on thirty-four, right across from Patrick Bailey at Timberbrook. That's a big one.
And there's another one going up on Fisher Road. Actually, there was one that was approved, there was, one, it's in that area, one was approved and then one was shot down, one was turned down. I don't know which one was which, whether it was Sands or Costco that was turned down, but there's one on each side of the road, basically.
There was a lot of going there.
Yeah, there's a lot of back and forth on it. All right, all that being said, if there are no, no further business pending before council, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Have a second, all in favor? All right, unanimous, thank y'all very much.